All right, it is six o'clock and I'll follow the county planning commission meeting for May twenty seventh. Twenty five to order. Do you have a roll call? A, here, Jesse?
Here.
B?
Here.
A C?
Yeah, here.
Todd?
Here.
And John?
Here.
And Kevin is excused or not here today?
He is not here.
Okay. You have an agenda for tonight, is there anything to add or any changes or anything?
Yes, so. Kevin has decided to step down from the planning commission.
Okay.
So the board will. Determine a new number. Maybe time.
We have any alternates?
We do not.
Okay, I know there was, was, we had a couple for. The zoning board?
The EPA is allowed to have up to two alternates, but there are no alternate support planning commissions.
Could somebody be an alternate there and then? We, yeah, I know there was a person that had mentioned they would like to be a part of this at one point during that joint meetings that we had.
Okay, yeah.
Mark Grant had mentioned.
Okay, yeah, you should contact Heather Cooley's supervisor. The supervisor is the one that appoints. Appoints members on their. For five board.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so anybody who's interested in serving should contact them.
Okay. Is that something we need to add to the, or put it in somewhere else?
We do not need to add that to the agenda unless anybody would like to discuss that on the meeting.
Okay. And you have the agenda for tonight?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll move on to public comment, this is a three minute conversation you may have with us. Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the minutes. What a backdrop, so first we're going to go to the approval of the minutes from the April twenty ninth, twenty twenty five meeting. I'll make motion with the events this second.
Report.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we move on to public comment, this is three minutes of just general comment. We do have some things down further down here that we will have conversation about, we don't have a public comment on those. But if anyone would like to speak, you have three minutes, you stand up, you can ask questions, you can use your three minutes how you see fit. I will open that up at six oh three. This second. We have no one stepping forward, I will close the public comment at six oh three. No items tonight for public hearing. Stephen, I noticed one thing on the notes from last time, you said that we had approved the, under the new business. It said that there would be a public hearing. On the twenty seventh, which would be today is meeting for that for the accessory buildings on corner parcels.
Yes, I was not able to get the necessary notice, so we came on April and time to that for the next month.
All right, very good. All right, so we have the planning and zoning report for April twenty twenty five attached. Lots of information there. Next up, we do have our unfinished business, which we do have these. P C twenty five D H O three for McMillan for the special events venue. So we are back, we've already had the public hearing. We got all the things that we are here, so we had some things that we were working on, so if you want to give us an update on where you're at on.
Can I ask a question real quick? Who is not permitted to vote on this because we missed the public hearing? I think I might be one of them.
Yes, so it would be you and me.
Just, okay, just the two of us, okay, thank you.
If you can participate in conversation on this?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, I'm gonna make this whole last quarter a little quicker than we did last time, I know they approved for everyone, so. Just a quick start, when we first approached the committee here. We thought we had pretty good people on board with it and. I thought we had a pretty good program, we knew we had to do a lot of things, because we weren't up to speed and didn't know exactly, that's why we came to you guys and. At sunset, we really. Picked up the pace a little bit and we were asked that we had to do special things, one room was to invite two and a half acre parcels to five, we did that. The other was to get a driveway permit from the county and we did that. We also hired an engineering company to. Address the water retention program, that's all completed, I think you guys may have been fortunate to have handled that. We were also asked then for a septic tank permit, septic system permit, and we also got the well permit, so. Both of them have all been approved, so those are all right now approved, commissioned, understood. I think. The site plan is well in order for what we're gonna have in our future here. One of the things that was really had to be brought up and we had to address several times is our. Article number nine, in regards to special event venue, it shall be located on property which contains principal residence of the operator. It also states that four is being put to active agricultural use. And there is why I run the descriptions to everyone, because we still want to have a wedding business. We're actually gonna make that building a agriculture recreation and a special. Learning center. Free on your children to come from the schools and daycare centers and stuff like that, we're gonna pay you too out there for them to. Learn about animals, learn about plant trees, so they understand what a parent tree is, to an apple tree, to a cherry tree. So it's gonna be also a learning venture for young children and stuff. So I don't know what else we may have to do, you hopefully get your blessing and approval, but. Whatever it takes, we're willing to do it. Try to do our best, do. Do what we're supposed to do and get you guys' approval, I think, so. If you say anything else, let us know and.
The only thing that we seem to be running into an issue is wanting us to adjoin our property. Now, there was some talk at the last meeting that I was at, it was able to be the last one, about it wasn't enough agricultural. I think we've had that resolved, that we only need it to be fifty one percent if we're claiming an ag exemption, which we're not. Otherwise, there's not a, there's not a requirement of how much of it is agricultural use. And so I spoke with the Michigan Department of Agricultural, I spoke with Michigan State. The right to farm, all of that stuff, to try to make sure I had the correct information. And he also recommended, a gentleman from the agricultural department recommended I speak with the county assessor. About what that would look like if we had to combine our property, our primary residence with that. And the assessor was very clear, she was like, we will tax everything commercial. That property is gonna get taxed commercial the minute we, the minute you run it out, it's commercial. And if your house is attached, it will automatically attach to the commercial liability. Which would then cause me to lose exemptions that, I mean, we're not claiming an ag exemption, we never have. But it would cause us to lose other, like homestead stuff, it will affect those, not lose it, greatly reduce those exemptions. Which would, I mean, it would tax us out of even being able to do this project. We have, our property is right next to this property, it's not in our pension, it's a satellite, what came up, like, well, what if? There's a lot of what ifs, like, what if you guys change organs, or what if, I mean, there's a lot of ifs, you can't live your life with what if. It's not our intent to sell, try and build it, we don't want to sell it. And, you know, we're really to work with, like, what can we make, you know, like, in our mind, if for whatever reason the property is sold. We can make it in there that, well, then you reapply for a special use permit. Like, we can put that out there, or, or you either use it the way we're using it, or you reapply for a special use permit in your name. We can ask that you just make this special use permit our name only, that's reasonable, and we're willing to do that, so. I don't know what else we can, I mean, I think our architect has got everything fixed as far as site plan that everybody asked for, so at this point. I feel like we're kind of, we're, it's the time for you guys to make a decision, there's much else that we need to do on our end.
We've also looked at the situation as if, if we were to sell it, someone, we decide that it's been too much and we can't handle it. We do sell it, they can either work under our special use permit, put it into their name, or we can sell it and somebody can make it a house. It'd be a beautiful home, it's a barn, it'll look beautiful anyway, they can make it a six bedroom, four bath home. So they could even revert it to a home if they wanted to, but. It doesn't have to be, they don't have to carry it on like we want, but. We're in hopes that you guys will approve us tonight and we're able to go ahead with the special use permit and. And also our site plan is approved and hopefully we can get construction started. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you for that, now we'll have a board discussion on this.
Stephen, would they even be, the new, if they sold it, the new owner cannot apply for a special use permit, because it's not even in compliance. Like, you can't just, because it's not joined to the commercial parcel or to the homestead, how would the people buying just a barn? With no home be able to even apply for a special use permit, continue it?
So it would be. It would need to be put to active agricultural use if it's not adjoined to the property. Where the operator lives.
But who verifies that? Like, you're not gonna go over there and see, like, okay, they had twenty one weddings and they had thirty one classes for children about agriculture, like. Oh, sorry, they had twenty three weddings and only ten classes for agriculture, like, how do you even go begin to verify that?
Yeah, and the. That would have to be a judgment called the zoning administrator. Or. Could eventually be determined by the planning commission if it's, like, if I were to determine that it's a. Violation of a special use. Then it would be up for a public hearing, and the planning commission would be the ones to decide. Whether or not to revoke the special land use. I don't believe we can require that a new owner goes through the process again, because it stays with the land. This is not about the owner, it's about the land itself.
Aren't we basically creating a non-conforming use then?
There is potential for that.
Can I ask how to not conform?
Because a special events venue has to be on the parcel that.
But it doesn't, that's not what it says.
There's a or, there's a or.
If you determine that it's active agricultural use.
Is it as, I mean, be a hundred percent honest, is there any practical way to decide that?
How will it be in the parcel?
Are you gonna require a report at the end of the year of how many weddings and how many classes they have, how, what practical way do you have to actually. Decide whether they're using it more for agriculture use?
It doesn't say more for, for more agriculture or less, there's not a.
They said or.
No, no, that's the part where I'm trying to make sure they understand, like, there's not, the state does not determine how much agricultural has to be agricultural. There is not that definition.
Not in the farming, that's correct, you're absolutely correct about farming and having animals and using your land for a farm. You're using it for a commercial venture though, so that's a little bit.
Farm animals on there, that is inherently agricultural use.
Do you have that in writing anywhere, from anybody you spoke to, to the state, to anybody?
I know that the, the assessor spoke with Stephen, did verify that there isn't a amount. I can get you something if I need to, but there's not a determination, only that fifty one percent comes in if I'm claiming an ag exemption. Which, that's not, that's not about taxes, this is about.
But aren't you trying to claiming an agriculture exemption?
No, that's the.
Well, then you need to join it with your parcel, if you're.
No, I don't, I don't.
There's only one way, there's either an agriculture exemption, an active agriculture use, or it's your principal, it's on your.
No, it doesn't say yeah, it says or, it can be either or, if I'm using it as a special use permit. It says either my resident has to be on there.
Correct.
Or it has to be used for active agricultural, and that's where the key is, is what is active agricultural? I currently have ride planner, well, in all honesty, that's active agriculture. If I have my animals grazing out there, that's active, if I have farm animals on there, that classifies as active agricultural. It's, there's not a, like, you have to have fifty weddings and fifty one ag events, that's, there is, that's not a thing. Like, you know, I. I can get something from the agricultural guy if I need to, I can have him send an email, but I did have. The assessor reach out, and she was very clear, she understood that completely. And I know that she had talked to you, but I don't know what, I obviously left. You know, calling you that same day, and I think you said.
So they won't be taxing this, this wedding venue as, what will they tax it as?
It will be taxed commercial.
So the wedding venue is, so you're concerned.
That whole parcel will be commercial, if my home is attached, it will be taxed commercial, she was very clear. Because that was one parcel, and she's like, my understanding from her is they are going to tax it at the highest. Rate that they have. Which would be commercial. So my mindset is, as long as whoever buys it either uses it as active, like, the same as we are using, which. That is active agricultural, and they could, or they can convert it to a house, or they can do whatever they need to do. Again, we're doing like, what ifs. Like, okay, like. It's not our intent to sell it, we're still trying to build it.
We live our lives in what ifs, that's our job, we're supposed to think of every what if, unfortunately.
Well, trust me, I had to have that, that engineering report for if there's a hundred year flood and if there's this, I was like.
That's a lot of luck.
Like, this is crazy, like.
There's all this stuff that we are required to have, and it's, like we said, we don't, this is, again, I always say this pretty much every meeting, this is not our day job.
I get it.
Doing as part of this, so we have. We have our.
Sure.
Zoning rooms. Where we're trying to make sure that we fit this, so that it isn't twisted.
Yeah, right.
And it fits in there, so.
That's, that's why I went with all your recommendations, everything you've asked, everything that you've said, that.
Well, not everything, well, that's, that's not the sticking point, you absolutely have done everything else.
You get to a point where, and you know, you gotta kind of say, hey, look.
Yeah, that's next to your.
You guys have applied with ninety nine percent of our stuff here, and it tells me in there, which I keep looking at, and I'm running a hundred times, it says or. Not and, if we say and, you, which is being, look, it doesn't say and, it's either or, one thing or another. That's what I keep looking at, I even highlighted that one.
I can trust me, we just have to have something presumed.
And it's like, I'm gonna either do this or or do this, and there's that throughout your whole life, I think, you know. So I think we've done everything we can, our ability, and we spent over twenty thousand dollars to get this ready, and I think we're ready to go. Move forward, if you guys will move forward with us.
Well, Stephen, are we. Comfortable in, in how we will receive the or? If, if it's one or the other. And we're approving it, do we have to say we are approving it on this or that, or are we able just to?
I think you're creating a nightmare in the future, we've already done these special events venues, and we've never used an active agricultural use because. And it's not even defined in our ordinance whatsoever, and I just, I think these will come out of the woodwork. In every neighborhood, in every township, or in every area of the township, and it's gonna be separate parcels with planted. A couple of animals grazing and planted, it's gonna become all over the township, and if, if people actually knew what we were doing here tonight, this room would be full. If they knew we were about to approve a commercial venue that just had active agricultural use on it. With no definition of what active agricultural use is.
I think that's been advertised throughout this last seven months, if you're having meetings, it's proposed to the board.
Okay, so my other question, if that's your concern, like, there are. The state commission is full of agricultural properties. I guess, you're not the only place, this is not the only place that asks for a barn, like, we're not the only place to ask for that. There's, there's a gazillion of them, like, there's, Ravenna has one, Prima has multiple, I mean, there are a few.
For fact, those are not commercial venue, like, they're not commercial properties.
No, they are not commercial, I meant multiple that weddings, the hottest damn barn in the world.
Well, we only have what's in our ordinances, they may have different ordinances.
And I get that.
Controlling that, that aspect.
I promise you, not everybody in the world is gonna be building one, because they're not the cheapest thing in the world to build. But I get your point.
Like, the, for example, the one over behind the V P, we required that they build a house on that parcel, and I think that's been their sticking point. All along, and why they haven't been able to move forward is because they're not ready to build their house yet and live there.
That one was don't commercial, so it didn't need a house.
Oh.
They just, they planned to.
Oh, that's right, they planned to live on a separate parcel close by, that's right.
Yeah, so, okay.
Like the person in the bag? So is it trying to, is it, that we're trying to avoid the commercials on me? We want it to be some bag, is that the? Cool, like, beginning part of this issue?
Wedding venues are permitted as a special use in the ag district as long as it's on the parcel that, or an active.
Obviously, like, so I'm the supervisor, so that's why I'm like, not just a regular person interacting, but. Yeah, because I know, like, other venues, and obviously not in Stevie County, but you have, like, heritage farms, and obviously they're much bigger than what you guys are starting. But I was looking at their stuff and they're zoned differently, don't know when they started, if they were zoned as ag.
But yeah, they've been zoned as ag for years.
But I think they're different now, because the other surrounding parcels are ag and theirs is not. It just says local zoning one on one, I don't know what that is.
He did jump a bunch of hoops he said one week, because we went and talked with him.
Yeah, because they had the house attached to it too and all that other stuff when they started, but. I kind of get the thing though, that it is hard to differentiate, like. Where, where is the, like, where's the line at? Like, when then does it have to switch?
Yeah, it's like we're going, you know, we, we spoke about this before, but, you know. David, I at least have been here, I think maybe Casey's, ever since we put together a special events venue with. Basically, the original intention of it being putting old buildings to use. You know, and I have nothing against a building. At all, but when it's not combined with parent parcel. It's just like, it's setting us up for an issue down the road. Not to say there is one, I mean, change is guaranteed. But it's just wide open, set us up for it. That's our part, what kind of cost difference is there in the taxes on your house? What kind of cost difference is that? If it was commercial versus what it is right now today, is it two thousand dollars a year?
I don't have exact figures on that, to be honest, but the reason. We could have, the reason we went with agriculture, honestly, we started out with agriculture, because there is cases that it allowed you to have. Wedding barns, whatever, so we thought, well, okay, we'll just keep it a agricultural situation. Because it was residential, we, we had, we were asked to, we zone it to agricultural. We were asked them to take two and a half acres and make it five acres, so these were requirements for our ag, so we said, okay. Now, as we got into it, we did realize that, well, you gotta have, like, I made a mistake. I applied for a residential permit, knowing, okay, I just want to get material in here, you think, he said, no, it's gonna be a commercial permit, I said, fine. There's extra money. Then it went on to have a commercial well, and we had to be a commercial.
That's what you discussed.
Yeah, so it all went to be a commercial anyway.
What's the agricultural zone?
Be actually taxed. Well, our tax will, will represent it being a commercial.
And I won't know what the difference in taxes is until the barn is built, because I, I can't.
Well, I understand the little thing, I'm asking.
I don't know, if you combine the property, the barn is not a standalone thing, it's all one.
I understand that, what I'm saying is. That the taxes on the barn are gonna increase, whatever, they're gonna, they're gonna be what they're gonna be, period.
Regardless, correct.
She couldn't tell you what your house would be?
That's what I'm saying, right now, today, you could get that answer, well, it's gonna go from two thousand dollars to three thousand dollars.
Right.
We could see, we could find out right here in the tax department, I guess, one.
I don't know.
Because that's taking higher mortgage to take care of all that.
And I don't know, I don't know if that will reopen up, because obviously my husband's owned this property for forty years, right, I don't know if changing that will. Will, I'm sure it will, I'm sure it's gonna change, like, right now it's capped, right, you can only increase it so much every year.
But that's the same for commercial too.
But once, but once we combine that as a commercial, it will probably open that up, and so the taxes being based on eighty six compared to twenty five.
You're gonna look at a homeless valued at almost four hundred thousand, a barn is gonna be maybe probably four or five hundred thousand. But you're looking at almost a million dollar enterprise, which, to me, that's a lot of money, but to pay commercial taxes on a million dollars, we can't afford that, we would, we're not even.
Do you know that you can afford the taxes on the commercial barn that you're building, did you ask what that would be, did she give you an estimate?
I'm saying.
No, no, if that's, she said she's taxing that commercial as a standalone, even if you don't combine it, so did you ask her what those taxes would be after you built?
Based on the building, there's no way of, that's gonna be based on the building. That's not.
So you don't have an estimate on the value of the building?
We don't have an absolute value right now.
Oh, because that's what, I can't go to the bank or anything else until I get a site plan or a.
Well, what if the taxes for this commercial venture are way more than you thought they would be?
Well, I don't think they're gonna be that expensive.
Well, even if they are, it's the whole idea of making money, I mean, it will be making money, you know what I mean, so that I'll be able to afford that. If it's not coming out of my, you know, my household budget, that's.
Right, but if it really, if it only increases the taxes on your house, like, five hundred or a thousand per year, then wouldn't the barn make enough money to support that too?
You really think it's gonna grow up five hundred thousand a year?
I don't know, we were hoping you would come back with some firm numbers from talking to.
That's all our taxes, we'll pay them, we have to pay them, otherwise they'll take the barn, they'll take the house, they'll take everything. We're just trying to get it done, so that, with us, that's what I've, you know. Ask God about this a couple times, she can ask, what if, you know, we don't get this approved, he said, well then, we don't get it approved. We don't move on, I guess, but we're only trying to do this legally as possible, and do all the right things we're supposed to. We've got all the permits, you got all assets to get, every permit that you've asked us to get, and we've done that.
It just kind of feels like right now, you guys are like, well, it might cause us problems later on down the road. Okay, but I'm following, for me, from my perspective, I am following your ordinance. I can't help that your ordinance leaves you open to issues later, I, I get from your perspective, but from my perspective.
So technically, you're not following our ordinance, you're saying you're going to, so there's the problem. We need to put in place a system to, to know whether, whether it's being followed, like, I want to know. You know, we don't, we don't want to just issue a special use permit and then all it is is weddings, like, you've, you've never had a class there, you never did anything. You, no animals are there, no nothing, no, because your neighbors are also gonna be watching, and I'm sure Stephen doesn't want them to be calling and saying, oh yeah, by the way, there's.
You go back to every, every time you, you will grant something, you always go back and check it out, of course not, like, my neighbors are gonna tell if I'm not doing something right.
Correct.
You're right, my neighbors are gonna tell, so that's not me, like, you guys don't go police every single thing you do, like, that's crazy.
No, we're a complaint based township, so anybody can complain about anything.
And they do, and I just.
I just mentioned earlier too, because the land we're planting, air trees, apple trees.
I already have rights, you hinted, like.
We've got, these, these trees aren't gonna, we're not gonna pluck them up and sell property, if we ever do sell the property, so it's always gonna be. Someone of agricultural use, no matter if there's no farm animals or nothing, when you plant trees, you plant grass, you plant.
Oh, not grass, but yeah.
Anything you want to plant. It's considered agriculture. We're not asking for it to be not agriculture, we're just saying it will be completed, we're not gonna say, oh, guess what, we changed your mind now. It's gonna have the trees and, and things like that, and as far as teaching children, I have been teaching children for many, many years, with my riding stable I had. I had a pet and some backup, I had more children come there and see the, the animals, and a lot of them, believe it or not, had no idea. What a cow look compared to a pig look, because they come from Chicago. So this way, hopefully, you know, if it don't work out, that the schools don't want to come, well, I don't want to sit here and tell you that. Well, we gotta close the barn because the kids decided not to go. I'm pretty sure, because we've asked a lot of questions, so take care of centers, the schools, hey.
To be fair, honestly, down the road, my thought was to plant in a garden and be able to bring the seniors in. And let seniors play around in the garden, because guess what, that senior group is growing by the minute, and they're not all ready to just put up their hats and sit in a chair and do nothing. You know, like, they have lots to offer, but that's, you know, I don't want to say I'm doing it right now, because that's down the road when things are in a different spot, but.
You can accuse me of coming from left field here, but have, have you looked into a partnership? A church, a university? You know, some public organization that would maybe own half of it or underwrite it? I'm not.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't, I understand where you're coming from, I have not yet, because I really would like to do eventually, not yet, we're not there, but eventually I would like to do. Something with the F F A.
You know, universities have all these outposts.
Yeah.
For, you name it.
Right.
I would say.
They're losing that ag by the mint, it throws away, okay, it's a housing issue.
Especially, you know, Michigan State, Central Michigan, Grand Valley. Western, depends on where you're at, but. I know that, I was, you know, I've seen local, I don't know, event centers, not event centers, but. event centers, not event centers, but special event locations that were owned and operated by a partnership with a landowner or, see, I don't know the nitty gritty of it, but.
Neither that, it's probably not something I'm gonna wanna do if I have to have my primary residence attached to it.
Let us do this for a second, because we need to have some board discussion on this, and I'd like to bring this to, between where we are at this. Because we, we stuck on this the last time, this is kind of what we built to, to number nine in our requirements. It, it, we're still at that point, where it's a special event venue shall be located on a property which contains the principal residence of the operator. And then it has the condo, or which is being put to active agricultural use. Are those really an and, or is it an or? Because if, if we're haggling over that, we're, we're trying to be sci- but it's agricultural. At the same time, we're trying to say, well, the, the the principal residence is not on the property that's being built. So are we allowed, and I guess we're opening it up to potential confusion on this, or is that something?
Yeah, so it isn't, it's an or. It's the it's at the determination of the planning commissioner as whether or not you feel it is active agricultural use. I having given exemptions for farm buildings. Just looking at it, I, for something like this, I wouldn't. I'd have a hard time giving an exemption for a farm building, I would need to see that they're going to be selling it commercially, um, selling the rye. Commercially or selling the animals that breaks on it.
Also, number two concerns me a little bit, when it says that all events shall be at invitation, they shall not be advertised or open to the general public. I feel they may be bordering upon advertising and being open to the general public. But if you're just, if you're having like a, a garden where people just come in, is that an invitation basis or?
Have to be invitation.
Okay. So everything they did, like, any school?
You'd have to invite a certain group of.
Okay, they'd have to like have specific that you're coming, you're coming, it's like penciled in on a calendar or something.
Right.
Okay.
So what was the reasoning that this couldn't be some commercial?
It would need to add a little land use plan. Not sure how we.
I think the problem we ran into is when we took off the existing building, we should have taken off the active agricultural use for in, when we, when we readjusted the ordinance to remove that, that you had, your building had to be at least five years old. I think we set ourselves up for this exact situation of building, like a brand new commercial building. We took, we took that off because someone didn't have a building at all.
It was for open space.
Right.
Um, and then if they wanted to do like a shed for storage or um, like a balcony facility, then they would be able to construct that.
Okay.
I don't believe it was ever intended to be.
Right, build a brand new commercial building to house the whole thing, right.
But it would also, again, be a case by case basis. Where, where a forty acre farm is more appropriate.
Right, because this building and parking lots and drainage is taking up so much of the five acre parcel. It's as if that's really the only thing that's happening on the parcel, except some accessory uses instead of active main uses.
I just have one question, so just curious, the, the sensor, I mean, you technically, they would just be classified you as commercial. And, because they can't change your zoning, you have to.
They're just classified.
Classified, it's that, it'd still be a zone to hang, but classified is. That's where they get that. Which is, I think is.
So what's gonna happen, what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
When it goes to be sold, because at some point in the future, it will be sold.
Right, so like. What's that? There are a number of possibilities. Best case scenario is both parcels are, if approved, as separate parcels. Both parcels will be owned by the same person, and that person will continue operating that as a wedding or a special event venue. In that case, the special land use would be transferred and they'd be taken care of with no issues. There could also arise a situation where both are sold separately. And then someone comes in to operate a special events venue as a traditional, um, a traditional banquet center.
For business events.
For business events, and then the agricultural component is set aside. That's, in my mind, that was potentially a more likely scenario. In that case, then if we just two separate parcels, we would have to keep an eye out for that and then watch and make sure that, that agricultural component is not diminished. Once it begins to be diminished, then myself or whoever's the administrator or in charge of that would have to have to notify the new owner that they're not in compliance with the special land use permit, and then we'd have a special, like, we'd have a public hearing. And the planning commission would vote on whether or not to revoke that public, that special use. So essentially, someone would be paying a large amount of money for something, and then they would be able to do it the way they intended or thought they could, unless they did their due diligence.
Well, if I sold and somebody started a business, that they wouldn't just be able, that could be re-zoned as commercial because it doesn't need the public.
Right. Unless the master plan changes.
We're only, we're only really trying to make this fit because it can't be commercial.
Yeah, he's not in the master plan, he's not zoning and everything else, so.
Right, because the closest commercial, I believe, is across the street from their house, like, across Pillen, that little triangle, yes.
Yes, that's right. Yes, that's not even in the master plan, it's commercial, it's leftover from previous zoning.
Okay.
Essentially, wait a minute, because the cemetery is there, there's a day prayer center on the other side. It's still on our side of number one twenty, there's that whole little corner, there's some weird little zoning in that, that whole little area, you're looking kind of probably can see it better.
Yeah, I don't see any commercial except a little triangle across.
Yeah, but I think.
That's the one. Where's that, the hot bakery, there's some other little stuff over there.
The hot, right.
There's a garage, yeah, there's a little, um, garage right there too.
It's hard to tell here because it's got that overlay. And we used to have a huge one along. So are we potentially saying that you could have a special events venue anywhere in the township? As long as you have five acres and you, you have an active agricultural use? So if you process like wood, firewood on a parcel? And you could have a special events, a wedding venue on the front of it or something?
With processing might be a little different because I would classify that as stop grinding.
Oh, okay. Like if you grow Christmas trees or something, or?
Yeah, Christmas tree farm.
Or you plant blueberries, but the blueberries aren't gonna be there for five to ten years, or, it takes a ridiculous long time till your blueberries start. So you could just potentially plant blueberry bushes, or?
Eighty-five acres, you could, that's what we open ourselves up to, yeah, eighty-five acres, with special events venue. Say everything.
Right, right.
Well, you plant them and they're dying, because nobody ever says, yeah, that's not a lie.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just, you stink at agriculture, sorry, you tried.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's kind of cancer or whatever else, but.
So are you thinking, I'm hearing like you're not believing that we're gonna leave, you said as agriculture?
No, we're worried about the next person, actually, like, when you get a building permit and the building inspector comes and you're like, you know what, I don't care if my outlets aren't the right, I I don't care if I do this, and he says, well, the next guy that's gonna buy your house, that's the whole reason an inspector comes to your house is because of the next guy. And that's kind of what we sit up here for, is we think about the next guy, not, not necessarily your, your situation.
Yeah. Our sample motion is that we would make it a, a motion on the condition that the subject property be combined with the property at one nine eighty-seven Pill. So it looks like we are at a point where that is the, the point where we have to make that. That, that's the click, that's not just, if we're trying to shoehorn something in there, that makes everything else. It's, it's as the ordinance is written, we've complied with it. Basically, that's for sure. Because outside of that, we're, we're talking more like in the outside of all that and all of our conversations. But it comes back to that one sticking point that that's, that's kind of where we are, correct? Am I, am I?
Yep.
Yep.
I just feel like the active agriculture use is, like, someone, I hate to single you out, they, but if we put a wedding events venue at although if he lives on the parcel, but if he didn't, it is a working farm, like, I mean, there is they have a farm store and everything, that, that, that to me is, is so much easier to determine, like, if it's an active agricultural use. Because it says active, it doesn't just say an agriculture use, it's an active, and so.
And if it's one parcel, then it will be.
Right, yeah.
And it's not such a blatant agricultural use that we're, like, we're debating. Like, it's not so blatant that it's obvious and we just move on. It's not so blatant that the next owner of the property like it, it'd be so easy to just remove that agricultural use with the next owner, if it was a Christmas tree farm, like some intense or, or some agricultural use that was sufficient enough to where we wouldn't be arguing that. Like, the next owner.
No, I understand, I think that aren't the same requirements that we have. If you don't teach it actively, then you lose your special use permit, like, for me, I, I, this is super clear, like, that's the easiest thing of all, because you can make it, you have to stipulate that when you sell it, if they, the special, you can make an exception to say, hey, we're gonna approve it, but it's only, this goes with you. The special use permit goes with you, when you sell it and the property goes out of your name, that falls away. You can make that to say, hey, that's how we're gonna do this. I don't see how, that can't happen, but that's why I look at it, is why can't you make that as an exception? Then the next person, you know?
You apparently have a building that somebody would have to meet this in the future, maybe decades from now.
I don't, I don't.
You know, like, it's a, it will be a pretty barn, it would be very cheesy.
Yeah, I don't doubt.
It's an heated pool, you know, it would be easy for someone to say, oh, we'll just go and sell it as, you know, we're just gonna buy it as a barn. As a, a house.
You'll go, oh, it's gonna be a sick venue for a, oh, probably within a couple hundred thousand, they have a beautiful home. All the means laid and everything set, so there's different avenues they could go to, um.
Those are a bunch of ifs now, we're all two, you know, like, here we are again.
I wish I could see all the things that might happen.
No, but if there weren't ifs, we wouldn't even be here, we'd be out of a job if we didn't have to think about the future.
It's just, I'll be honest, it's a little frustrating, because I remember sitting through the very first meeting that we came to, and I remember, I don't even remember, it was something about pitch on the roof. And I remember somebody saying, it's not our job to sit there and tell people how to use, how they have to build their house, actually, how they have to build.
No, I missed the first meeting, unfortunately.
No, 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 I mean, the first meeting, we started coming, before we started this process. And there was somebody having some issues with roof pitch or something, I don't know, I don't remember exactly. And there was a comment about, why isn't our job to tell somebody how they have to have the pitch of their house? It kind of felt like, okay, we're finally in a place where we get this, like, you know, it's starting to feel like we just rent our property and, you know, like.
Yeah.
You know, like, it's kind of, it's frustrating.
And it sounds as if I just bought that property, so I said, guess what, guys, I'm here, I'm gonna do this, I've been there for forty years.
Yeah, we're not.
I'm not planning on leaving or going anywhere, and I like your idea, you come up with this. Not to New University or somewhere like that, um, I mean, the school just down the road has property, forty acres. And why couldn't we say, are you interested in a grant to be partnership in this situation? I mean, that's another option, you know, that we could go to options, or church. I'll hear you here, so, but I don't really.
Yeah, church has all the minds.
Never thought about that.
Church is, school, yeah, those are the ones down the line.
Well, guys, I'm not sure we, uh.
For me, I just think it needs to be combined, that's just the cleanest thing for us, and I think it just needs to be combined with the, with the house.
You met all the other things that the, the, the bottom site is, and everything else.
That's it, it says by or, it says or, that's so specific about that, it's in writing, it says or. Not and, that's what my biggest argument is and my biggest frustration.
What, in what sense?
And it says or, you do this, and it's not and, essentially, it's or you do this. It doesn't join properties, and this property are together. So how you wanna call it, combined tax numbers, whatever, it's all different, we could call it if. But this is together, this five acres adjoins this five acres, so it is combined. It's not how you wanna look at it combined, whether it's combined as parcel numbers, whether it's combined as.
We wanna look at it as combined as down the road, when it does get sold, then it cannot be sold as a separate commercial building. And that was a non-conforming use that we set up, and the next people in the planning commission are going, why did they ever do that?
I respect what you're saying right now, why did we ever change this ordinance to what it says right now?
By, the house, one parcel.
That makes it easy.
That's all I think.
No, but that makes it easy for you.
And so, and where I'm going with this is being, being in business for twenty-five years, I, I know this is an expensive project, I get it, the design's expensive, the project's expensive, everything is. And to me, the, the, the cost difference of paying a commercial rate on just a house versus versus of, of your current residential rate, okay, maybe it's two or three thousand dollars a year. To me, that's adding one more event, if you went from twenty-five events to twenty-six events for weddings, uh, two or three, whatever they're gonna be, there's your difference, it, it, it's not much of a cost difference to where somebody can say you're arguing to me.
Okay, but, but Jesse, I get that, if that was the only thing.
Gotcha.
If that was.
When I, yes, absolutely. When I first researched this, I looked online and I, I Googled the heck out of this and read tons of stuff, and I remember writing this down, because it said, um, in examples, examples in Michigan suggest that active agriculture use typically involves dedication of a significant portion of land to ongoing income generating agricultural activities. Occasional or ancillary activities such as sporadic farming classes may not meet this threshold. And I don't have a source for this, I wish I did, I wish I could point exactly where I read this from. Um, but that really stuck with me enough to write it down and bring it here, because because we don't, like I said, we don't, we either need to define what an active agriculture use is, if that's even possible, or we need to be reasonable what, what an active, in, in, if, if, if someone, if something online suggests that it would and you suggested also, so you clearly saw something similar to me, that it would be an income revenue generating operation that's happening on this land. Then I think, I think it's pretty clear that it, that is, and it said, in this ordinance, it says that it says or which is being put to active agricultural use, so that would suggest that you're putting this venue on what already is income generating, I think it's just a vacant parcel, as far as I know, there's no income generating activities happening there currently. So if we go by the letter of what this says, it says which is, not which will be, or which could be, it says which is, which would be.
It has been active agricultural for forty years.
Forty years.
Because there have been horses out there, that raise out there, that we don't make any money on, the horses, they're just there for our pleasure.
Well, I bought some, some, yeah, but.
Well, for the most part, they're, it's not where we don't, like, live out selling horses, those are our.
That's what I was trying to say.
So how long have you, so both, you've owned the, where the events venue is, how long you've owned both of those parcels for forty years?
Yes, I even own Steve's property, and I'll, I'll.
I don't know who Steve is, I'm sorry.
You know Steve, you know Steve.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
It's one of the gentlemen who was complaining.
Yeah, and Jesse, to address your comment, which I understand, I used to have, what, be like two grand, twenty-five hundred? What I brought up earlier is you're looking at a house worth forty, four hundred thousand. Okay, so they're gonna tax that at four hundred thousand, but what are you, join it as you're proposing? Now they're gonna look at an eight hundred, maybe nine hundred thousand dollar taxable buildings. Not just the here and not just there.
It's not just that, if it's, if it's a joint, and for whatever reason, something happens, and we can't make the go of it, I can't imagine what would happen, but we can't make, now our house is on the line as well as.
That's why you wanna make sure it's gonna go.
There's multiple.
And that's what I'm saying, that's what we have, I mean, that business people do that every day, they put everything on the line.
Yeah, well, when I'm forty years old, if I want to put it on the line at forty, that's a whole lot different than when you're almost seventy. That's old.
And that's why we're also worried about the future, what if something changes in your life, and this, like, within a year, is in somebody else's hands?
I understand.
That would basically be expecting them to read our ordinance too. Like, you said they should do their due diligence, but that means, like, making sure that the special use permit should transfer. And not everybody does that, a lot of people think, well, it's there now, why can't I do it too? That can just create, like, a bad situation of us having to then tell that person, oh, I'm sorry, it was only approved for them because they were farming or whatever. I don't know, I feel like the sample motion is suggesting that our zoning administrator also thinks that we should go by it being combined, but it would be, the simplest for the township, it would be the simplest for everybody down the road, if they just were combined.
Is the definition of agricultural use up there as to decide if it is that? There's no, there's nothing else in here defined in the ordinance, but be your partner to determine that, whether or not this parcel was an active agricultural use.
Like, this is just another unduly obscured.
Yeah.
How do you define that?
Okay, see, I have no problem with this, because when I came to you eight months ago, I proposed this bill, and I proposed this thing, I was upfront, I told you it was a way, it was gonna be used, it's been agriculture for forty years, I own that property. And at that time, you knew nine was in process, didn't you, that you know that that was in our ordinance? Pretty sure you did.
Since when here since six twelve of twenty-three?
Number nine, but for nine months now, you've had, you've spent all kinds of money, and never said, oh, you gotta do this first.
We told you, like, every meeting so far, that it has to be combined.
I don't have this ordinance memorized, no.
It changes, it changes all the time.
Well, that's been in there for a place in time.
We see the special venue twice a year sometime.
I'd be saying, you know, brought it to the, to the, your committee, and said, hey, this, probably, this is what we're looking to do. And, you know, to enjoy properties would be, I might as well just turn around and quit right now, because you'd have a million dollar, a million dollar tax.
When you first come in and you're just asking our opinion about these things, Stephen usually suggests to people, we always say, oh, yeah, we can probably make this work, but that means then, once it gets further along, we dig deep into the book, and we see, okay, it has to meet all these requirements, and that's how we make it work.
I think what he's trying to say is, that's fine, but then requiring us to get the septic permit, requiring us to get the well permit, requiring us to get the commercial, well, the driveway permit, yeah. That, and then it requires us to get the soil guy, that was ridiculous.
No, so, I was learning too.
But if we weren't gonna get the permit to begin with, that's kind of, that was an access that maybe in hindsight should have been like, no, we should probably have determined this first before we required these other, I mean, again, right, that can be hindsight, looking back to say, well, we probably could have done that differently, but.
Have we granted any approvals yet for the project? And you're not required to get those things until, until the project's approved.
Although I think that was part of it, where.
You can start doing them for sure, but.
In the meeting, you weren't here, they're like, we need us to do, we need the septic and the well permit.
Or site plan approval.
Yeah, for the site plan approval, which we did.
We, we don't look at septic and well, do we?
We suggested, so that's very website, for one, and so, without even going to the health department at all, how can you give me an accurate site plan? That's a pretty tight site plan, can you give me an accurate site plan without knowing site's great?
Yeah, to see if we fit, yes, to see if what they would, yeah.
To me, it made sense, you can't say, well, you know.
But that's kind of how all construction begins, doesn't it? You have to see if it's even feasible to begin with, there's.
Right, but that's, I would assume that's typically after you say, yes, you could build it. First you say, yes, you could build whatever, it's apples and oranges at this point.
That's very, yeah, that's very nice, Jesse.
Part of, one of the, part of last time was, we were gonna have guys look into the consequences of joining the properties, I think, what was I talking about?
Well, they talked to her, but we don't have anything concrete or anything that helps.
Either way, she said point blank that we will tax everything commercial, because we're gonna tax it at the highest rate possible. We're not willing to, that doesn't make any sense to us, that, that opens up a piece of property that's been being taxed at a nineteen eighty-six rate, you know, what, incremental increases, but that would be, I mean, the house that was worth in nineteen eighty-six is definitely worth a whole lot more, and, you know, now we're at four hundred thousand compared to whatever.
Forty should be five hundred dollars.
Can, can they uncap it just because it's changing the use of the property?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think so, though, that's usually only if you sell, and they can show a new amount of what somebody paid for that, and now they know, wait a second, you were capped at this because it's from nineteen eighty-something.
I can clarify that with her, but that was my understanding, was that because you're now changing that completely to a commercial venue.
So, you're also adding a building, you're my.
So the building is gonna be taxed no matter what, though, like, I'm just worried, I'm just wondering what the consequences to their actual house would be.
That doesn't change, that portion still doesn't change this, like, you want us to combine it, like, whether they're gonna tax us out, we just.
Right, if you don't wanna combine it, you don't wanna combine it, plain and simple, that's, that's easy to know, if you don't wanna combine it.
There's reasons why we don't, obviously, but that's definitely placed.
And there's also reasons why our ordinance requires that it be done.
And it says also a or.
Active, right.
Guys, that's why I say, it's not and, you have to do that, you have to join it. It's a or, and you have to support agriculture, and it's by plan, a hundred Christmas trees out there.
Well, even if you don't, even having a tournament on there is, that's like a qualifying for active agricultural.
I know, but it says which is being put to use, so we're looking at the, what you're using your land for today, right now, as we're approving it, not what you're gonna do in.
That is why we have, we, so there's been, we, we had to do some clearing, right? We had to clear about an acre and a half of trees. Well, when we cleared that, we took fence line down, because we needed to get equipment in it. When you took fence line down, our horses can't walk, they're grazing, because the fence line is down. Well, it was down, and we've cleared it, we've now planted rye, well, it's now growing, so, yes, our horses are not there currently, and it's always been active agricultural. Like, you have to go back and look at when he was, he was getting permission to have a, I mean, it's just plenty of history, I mean, even when we started the project, I sent pictures to Stephen that our horses, I mean, it's just.
Well, the new person would also have to have it as an active agricultural use, if your horses can't, will no longer be grazing on their property.
But active agricultural is a multitude of things, right? Like, they have, it could be, they're planting a garden, you know, what is, you're right, what comes down to is what is active agricultural, and the state of Michigan does not define very well. And that was what the guy from the agriculture department said, there's lots of confusion, even in their own department, because it is not well defined.
And if there is a new order, why can't they just come to you and say, okay, well, it'll be, they're not gonna have a home joining to it, or whatever you wanna call it, we're gonna ask the committee that we join it, do it in a commercial, join it in a commercial, this five acres is a commercial. You don't have to have a house on it, or as they say earlier, the other wedding venue doesn't have to have a house on it, because there's own commercial. They got a special use permit.
That's where we get into the spot zoning, that's like all road. So we have houses, commercial house, and we just, we have agriculture and houses, which is part of what our, what our plan really, going the opposite direction than what we're trying to go, and that's our.
Right.
If the state of Michigan can't even define it, how are seven people in Dalton Township supposed to define active agricultural use? If you have a state of, with all their employees and all their people in the farming department, and they can't determine that.
And then you just say, take up empty grass lot, say it's butterfly habitat, like.
And, and guess what, and now, if I put one chicken out there, please, or not, if I put one chicken.
That's the thing, is that it's, we're trying to protect the intent, and the future proofing, or for you dealing with how this could be used, and the intent.
Let's hear your committee say, you know, our, our committee is not to tell people what to do on the property, but to actually make sure they follow the compliances of your regulations. And I feel that I've done due diligence to, whatever, in every step in this, and I've addressed every step, and I've completed every step. The only thing we're stuck on is one little word, it sort of says or or and, and it gives me the option to do either one. Or, or and, it's two different ones. And that's all I'm asking the commanders, look at that, say, look, he's done everything, I got everything from what you've asked to get, I've got everything except to be done. Or, which is being put to active agricultural use for forty years, can't see how many horses are out there, forty years. They still have horses.
Actually, my horse is grazing out there. My horse out there crazy.
Well, I promised I would go ahead, you guys, we're gonna have ours like before, so I.
We're, we're at the point, we're, we're, I don't see a way around the initial motion, which is, we would approve it on the condition that the properties are combined. If, if that's the way we, we go, that's, that's the direction I would need to go to.
Was that, was that second?
I mean, is there something we're missing? There's something you see that, I mean, there's not, we're beating this thing up over, over number nine.
Right.
We come back to number nine each time.
Yeah, that's, if you look at the parcel, if you see an active agricultural use, and you can, now, if you see it as an active agricultural use, then you can use the or. If you don't see it as an active agricultural use, or justify.
To me, it reads like they're doing both. You take your pick, either, either one, it sounds like they would qualify. But, I guess.
What do you mean by either one?
Well, uh, this new venue would be on the same property of their principal residence.
It's not.
It's not. Okay, we have two pieces of, two properties we're trying to make.
I think it'd be a good idea to find out exactly what your tax, taxes would look like.
We're not, we're not, we're not going by, there's too much risk. At the top of the text, which is, which is significant and a big point, there's too much risk.
Bring a chance of probably double.
But either way, if, if, for whatever reason, it doesn't work, it's second, you don't feel the risk that you're gonna lose your house. We just, that's not, that was kind of our line in the sand, like, we're, we came into this with a, look, we're meeting your requirements, so it shouldn't be an issue. Now, we, in our mind, like, look, we are adjoining it, we're not going anywhere, we haven't been there. Like I said, when Mike dies, I'm throwing him over the steps, we, we ain't going nowhere, you know, this is where we're at. But it, it is what it is, you guys are gonna do what you're gonna do, and. So restaurant, I highly recommend, if you deny it, do you guys go through a new fix, so that somebody else doesn't come in with the same thing, because in our mind, we a hundred percent follow your requirements.
We have a position, we're, we're more than welcome to take.
Not you, yes, I don't, anytime, I have active agricultural property, I don't have time for that.
Jesse, can I get on the board right now?
Yeah, like, I'm gonna apply, all the doctors are gonna apply.
Well, you guys.
We can't.
So, yeah, this, I'm, I'm just sitting over here trying to read, and it says, an active agricultural use refers to the active crop cultivation of crops, raising of livestock, or other agricultural practices on land that is considered to be in operation for agricultural purposes. That, this is, this is kind of like a byproduct, this, this land is going to be in operation for the commercial venue, and then the agriculture would be secondary to that. It's not, it's not like you're putting this, this business use in a massive farm where, where there's, it kind of is taking over the operation of the land. Yes, you're still able to have active agriculture on the land, it's just not the purpose of the land anymore. The purpose of the land is for the, the wedding venue.
But you know what, here's the thing, I mentioned this last time, to be fair, you're talking eight days a month is gonna be wedding. That's it, eight days a month it's wedding, the rest of the time, it's barn. It's a barn on our property that we're gonna use as a barn too. And that's what it's gonna be for, likely, in all honesty, six to eight months, probably closer to seven months a year. Because in the wintertime, it's Michigan, you don't have a lot of weddings in the winter. It's just, it is what it is. So it kind of feels like you're, you're assuming that this is all commercial, it's all wedding, but no, it's not all.
How would you use this as a barn? I see you could use it as like a banquet center or a classroom type thing, but how would you be able to use this as a barn?
I saw my tractor's in there in the winter.
Yeah, you could put your equipment in there, I could have, in one of those little offices, I could have small, my small animals, I could have the rabbits in there, I could have, oh, yeah, my goats, I could have rabbits in there. Um, you know what I mean, like, I can have my office in there for all of our farm stuff, and it's, you know what I mean, like, we can have classes in there, easily, you know, you can have four H, there's all kinds of ways you can.
In that case, that was a good point you brought up, in the back of that building, that you brought, right, so there would be a large garage door in that, so it would be a glass door that people can see vice versa. But if neither, and there's no weddings going from January, February, March, I can put my tractor.
And don't speak, he will, he will put stuff in there because there's never enough space for all this crap.
I'm just saying, I, we're not gonna try, we're not trying to say, oh, we're doing this, we're gonna slide it by you, and hopefully anybody behind us will slide it by you too. It's not our intent, never was our intent. Our intent was to have an agricultural piece of property, which you said would be good, have a barn on it, said it would be good, as long as we comply with all your rules and regulations, which we did. And the only thing we are looking at is a joint in the property, and to me, I've been out there for forty years, I don't know which property I'm on when I want, from there to there, I mean, it's, to me, it's a joint, to me, it's been combined.
I get that, but it's not, so let's, I mean, it's not, I'm sorry.
If I would have made another the same parcel number, if I would have.
And you can't do that unless you join it with your house, and that would, we wouldn't be sitting here anymore if it would join.
You know, our, our position has always been, I've been on, in nine years I've been doing this, and we step into this all the time, we're all discussing this right now, if we make a decision today, we are not gonna be here the next time this comes up, and there's, someone's gonna have to be able to differentiate as to what was the decision, and they're gonna read the same thing that we're going over here, and it's gonna be a conversation, they're gonna go, what did these guys do? So one way or the other, we have to be able to explain this, so that at least it's, it's following the process here. And that's, again, I, I don't, I wish I could find a way, it's, it feel, I mean, maybe I'm speaking out here, but I don't know if we are comfortable in the sense that, is there another way other than the combination of the properties that this makes sense for us up here? I mean, if that is a motion that is made, it would be the requirement that it would need to be combined.
It's my feeling here is that we're only having this conversation because the property can't be zoned commercial. And then we're trying to look at this in a way that assumes this active agricultural use, which then, even with that, it isn't clear enough that it's a shut, open and shut case.
Right.
So it's, it's a commercial building that we're trying to fit into this agricultural use.
No, it's a barn, it's a barn, first and foremost, it will be used for.
Let, if we could just, we're trying to have some discussion here, so we can get to what we actually.
Yeah, I mean, in, in the, in our packet, it just says, you know, even. Yeah, I, I mean, in, in the, in our packet, it just says, you know, even if, even if the, we agree all tonight that it's currently being put to agri, active agricultural use. This could potentially allow for this to just become a commercial banquet hall of its own. Like, it would no longer be a special events venue, it wouldn't be any of the, it would just be a banquet hall that is now in a residential neighborhood, basically. Or it would be an accessory building on a parcel without a primary building, which we also don't allow in our zoning, so. Anyway, you stack it, if the parcels are not combined, we're basically creating potential for problems in the future.
I don't think there's any angles we haven't. Explored on this, but. We're at a point where we should make a decision. This particular thing, is there anyone that would care to make a motion, either to. I don't think there's anything other than. Sample motion. Again, that's up to the. If, if that's the role they would like to go on, they could do with that one, or. If they want, I need to look at the tax options on that, or, I mean, it doesn't really gonna matter, it's still gonna be. They have the approval at that point if it's what they wanted to.
I'm assuming, because I can't vote, I can't motion either, either one of us, okay.
Yeah, you take someone's home business.
From the half, daycare.
I think that would be the red thing right here.
Yeah.
Weird though, there's a commercial next door, there's another little weird commercial, maybe that's the half. This is the, because there's a automotive shop right there too. And, and twenty right.
Yes, and those were all constructed years ago.
But where do they zone?
I believe those are zone.
In, on zoning map, it shows everything around that is R1, except the triangle, and then further down the 120 to the south. Which I think is, might be where the daycare is.
Yeah, so the daycare is actually further down.
Oh.
By adult.
Oh, okay.
Just.
Oh, that it's in that massive red, okay. So, I don't know what that is then, is.
So that, I believe that is the, um. Yalt Derbies.
Okay.
And the associated. Things are.
My question is, is there enough commercial stuff interspersed in there that we could potentially have that zoned commercial? But that's like my idea, but.
It would, I believe it would still be considered a spot zone.
I do too, because there's, it has to touch commercial, and it's too far from where commercial is zoned right now.
Or as to be at the master plan, it's commercial, which is not.
Correct. I think we're trying to move away from that, it would be a commercial.
What about whole family? If it were zoned to R2, it could be whole family.
R2.
Could you zone that R2 though, since the closest R2 is pretty far away?
The line for R2 is.
There's nothing there but A, I mean.
I think it goes up to McBellon.
Okay.
On the master plan, where it's R2.
Okay.
Might be able to. R2. What would that, what would that, what would that change? Without, in regards to this application of the, as I say, yeah, but.
That, that like L-shaped commercial, is that a garden storage?
I believe that may be.
Okay, the same thing you get clickouts, I mean, you can get this map.
That's almost a jointed property. But that's not 120. If you go right through the woods, you go with the right, my property.
That actually does.
Looks like R1.
That's R1.
Cemeteries are.
Cemeteries aren't allowed in any zone, just. It's churches.
That's what you get.
Yeah, I said you, it was cemetery.
Is everybody okay with this, as long as they combine properties?
Yeah. It meets everything they do.
Yes, so I'm just.
Yeah.
Sample motion where it's written on. Does it all?
Are, are we in agreement that we don't believe that it satisfies this active agricultural use?
I don't think it does, everything I read online, it doesn't seem to. But there is no clear definition, so. I, I don't know that we can say that with a hundred percent certainty, but. There seems to be a common consensus that it requires like a commercial agriculture, like you're raising animals, or you're raising crops for distribution or for profit.
There is no definition, and it's up to us.
Right. But.
It's like, when somebody has a horse farm, they're not actually, actually agriculture, of course they are.
It's not a horse farm, so.
I have, uh, when you say horses, it's not that.
It's not, the, the bottom line is, is I keep going back to, it's not active agricultural use enough for me not to question.
You can have that, but I'm telling you, you're wrong, you could do whatever you want.
The thing is, is that there's no, there's no definition for us to rely on, if there was, we would use it. And it's up for us to decide. And I keep, well. Bottom line is, is that it's for us to decide, and we're trying to protect the township and this property going forward. And it's not blatant enough that we're, we're still questioning this. If, if it was blatant, so blatant that it wasn't up for questioning, you would have already passed this down. And we're trying to fit a commercial building in here with this. Situation. But it's a commercial building.
Okay, but it's your, my frustration, it's your ordinance, you know, a hundred percent is your ordinance that we've been following. And you have no problem up to this point about, you're trying to fit a commercial building. It's fine.
Just, just to be fair, two meetings ago, we had that when we left, at that point, we had said, this is the direction it was going. One of the two parcels combined, and you love it, and we even waited, the last meeting, it was put on the table again, so it gave you time to get all the information you needed. And again, given, I think, a, a, a way for it to be done. It just needs to be like the combination of that, and again, it is a way to do it, and it's, it's the way that the ordinance, unfortunately, for you and your opinion, and. It may not be what we follow, we, we have to go with what the interpretation is from, from the group here. I mean, does anybody have, anybody on the other side saying that it's blatant agricultural use?
Even if there is active agricultural use right now, you can't take this huge building and parking lots and septic and everything and put it there without diminishing. What, what they're gonna be able to use for active agriculture.
I think isn't the intent this to use existing structure?
Yes.
So now we're allowing this building to be built. Uh, that was taken out of your ordinance, so. Yeah. Well, the, the whole thing goes away if the problems are. The whole thing goes away, and this would have been done a couple meetings. And there, there's nobody up here that would, I, I want people to be able to do what they want with their properties. There's nobody up here that's more adamant about that than probably me. Bottom line is, is we have a job to deck the overall. Intent or the. The future. But this all goes away if the properties are combined, that's, that's all I. So. Does anybody else feel any differently? So, should we just make a motion to approve this on the condition that the properties are?
Yes.
And just leave it at that? Make a motion to approve PC 25-03 on the condition that the subject property be combined with property at 2987. Or. Let's take hold call. Hey, yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
I don't think you can.
I don't think.
Same.
They, they, yeah.
And, yeah.
Yes.
Voting numbers that. That's something that.
We look at, uh. What can I do, I got a very valuable piece of property there. Very valuable piece of property, and you basically die in my hands and I have to do anything, I'm not building large part, I'm not building gas. You know, that's, I don't know if you guys had that much hassle we've had.
Oh, of course, Jesse has some stories that would just bring you to tears.
You know, and, and you, you're asking, but there is a clause that you guys could say, hey, he said or. It's been passed. I can't see myself doing what you're asking to do, I don't know what I can do with this property now. I have five acres that I cleared because I thought we were gonna have a event center. But now that I cleared it, it's basically a vacant piece of property. You guys would have made very well good money on that building, get taxed. You know, you've been taxed on about $500,000 building, now I would show.
Well, at this point, we've pretty much, we've, we've gone through several meetings, kind of looking for that option for you, which would, would meet the requirements there, and hopefully, uh. Something you can consider, and if that is something you can. Let's say we go, that's, yeah, that's, that's the best option for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to new business, we have Lakewood additions, uh, sub area plans update in public in May.
Have you gotten any feedback on the, any of the notices that went out?
I'm not getting any feedback yet.
Okay.
There may or may not be some. If, there are. If there is, if anybody objects to. Regarding future notifications, then we have to send out a notification, I have a sixty, sixty-three day review period for adjacent communities. Uh, if we don't receive any objections, then we are all set to skip that sixty-three day comment period, and just hold a public hearing once the time is ready.
How long do you have to wait for objections, knowing that the mail is in disarray, and that it can be weeks before you get it?
I was, it's gonna take a while to actually write the draft, and, right, so if we don't receive anything by the time that it's.
That it's done, then you feel comfortable.
Between that, we just made a. Proper notification of the public hearing, that we can, I didn't say we are completed. I think, I think we're just gonna begin soon. I'd like to send out a survey, that'll be done online, similar to how we did it for the parts of rec plan. Uh, there's the option of the public open house, it's a little more time intensive. Yeah. There may not be worthwhile. That's something that we can discuss and see if we wanna.
Like, probably, if you have, if we were to have something like that, would there be something like for the, the replating process? That's probably where a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's good for me to answer questions, and, you know, if anybody had ideas, it'd be more of an informal forum. Have that voiced, which is maybe advantageous over a survey, because those are typically a little more constraining, yes, no, maybe.
Could you vote?
You could do both, and I would.
I mean, at least then, I would think that's maybe the best option.
The best options for both.
At two options, no one can say, I would no. Or.
Yes.
And, so, to me, that would be a viable thing, and, and would that be, um, like a, in a meeting format, or is it an informal thing? We would be representing or having, answering questions, or?
Yes, that'd be more informal.
Okay.
We just answer questions. Love to look into how other people do theirs, and see, that's a good, good way to do that.
We'll be doing a lot of. That'd be a good question for Steven, let me introduce you to Steven.
That's, that, that, that's a chart, so, maybe help you out.
Would the developer be presenting?
He would not be.
No.
Okay. He'd be welcome to comment, he's gonna be.
Diagrams and maps and a scope would be enough, probably.
Yeah.
Get everybody's juices going.
Some history of the.
Yeah.
History and purpose from the flats. And then also.
Right.
There's some studies showing these are, you know, all of these are township owned, all of these are. The section's privately owned.
Yeah. That would be the best map, or is it developers here, just, you know, somebody ambushes?
Imagine the main question, they're gonna be, why are we doing this, and they, they like. Yeah, they don't look at it, they're not, they don't know what, looking at here, what they're doing.
Yeah.
They're gonna be like, what is this?
It's a land they can't do anything with.
The important thing, I think, is to gauge the public's opinion on whether the township should hold on to it or sell it. And what manner it should be developed, if.
Right.
At the end of the day, the township's responsible for it. And people pay taxes to support that man, so.
All right. And we would all participate, or, I would get as many people here to help answer questions and.
Yeah. Here, I don't know if there's. It's that requirement for how long you have to be here, or. What I heard, but I'll see.
For instance, you know.
That's probably so.
Or something like that. Send them email, letting. Kind of figure out dates that work, it's actually in late June.
A big map would help people.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll be putting those maps. Scripts and charts.
We have a blacktop that can. I connect to that, so it was the DVD.
That would help people, yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Is there anyone like that has parcels that we don't know who owns it? I mean, there was a lot of that stuff that.
We do know. Who owns most of it. Uh, that, a lot of times, that's a situation where. We just lose contact with the owner, but somehow the taxes are still paid.
Okay, I, I guess that's true, we have the tax, you could send it to that. Okay. And I guess that's true. We have the tax. You could send it to that address.
While taxes aren't paid, the county gets it. And then lately, we've been purchasing most from the county. Hopefully, we can obtain them, to solidify kind of ownership and help facilitate. If necess, if desirable, transferred to private hands or, um, combining with other parcels to make it easier to be black. Yeah, the little, the little pieces of there, they're messy. There's one little piece we can't close down a road.
Right.
And the road is, there's a lot of acreage devoted to roads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we go ahead with both of them. That sounds like a good plan. You said, uh, June. I guess we'll wanna get the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee here even to say, so.
They'll be invited, but I would like to touch base with them. Just in case they have any ideas or if there's anything that would be other things that I'm considering.
I mean, how many acres we're talking about here total, roughly?
Um, five hundred to a thousand.
Okay, and the rest, and the, uh, residential units, I'm trying to remember what he proposed. Five hundred?
Yeah, it's, um, I think it was about two hundred and thirty.
Was it? They were small, small.
Yeah, so it's gonna be half acre to three quarter acre.
Half acre left.
Which the villages, um, the village of Lakewood Club has twenty thousand square foot, like, um, twenty thousand square foot acre flats. Half an acre, twenty thousand square feet is a minimum build.
Right, yeah. Right.
Or it's just all, all under our, R1, right?
Yes, but it should all be more than likely R1.
Right.
So we would have a minimum of one acre.
One acre, yeah.
Kind of.
Which is better, those lake flats, they're tight.
Yeah. But another, um, aspect of this is saying, how far is it appropriate to allow for more, more density, say, half acre or three quarters of an acre?
Was he proposing duplexes?
We're getting to those lake flat conversations where you have lots of.
They don't wanna put a detask on the acre. That's where, that's where the market is at, with the starter homes.
Little car.
Well.
Four million dollars.
Yeah. All right. Does that answer our questions on that? Or do we have a plan to move forward with the, that? So when you do both of those, and let us know a date.
Making sure it's worked.
Right. All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Or, I didn't see I asked, you really?
I saw it in your face.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose? And seven? Heather, what do you say?
For entertainment purposes.